Good morning, everybody. Welcome to our council workshop for October 4th. We've got two items on the agenda this morning. Recycling contract changes and the stormwater ordinance update. Scott, I'll quickly kick it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, as the PowerPoint is loading up, this is an opportunity to get up to speed on two areas dealing with our enterprise funds. The recycling, that's why we have Mr. McCoy here, and also stormwater ordinance changes, both of which give Jonathan Gano an opportunity to speak with you. So, I'll turn it over to Jonathan.
Good morning, Mayor, members of council. Jonathan Gano, Public Works Director. First thing I would like to talk with you about this morning is the proposed changes to our recycling contract. This is principally driven by the fact that our privately-owned processor will be closing down their single-stream recycling operations. And we've been a party to a process for a long time to essentially do a reverse privatization of the recycling processing with feasibility studies and other things that started in concert between the City of Des Moines and the Metro Waste Authority as far back as the fall of 2016. Pleased to tell you that, and I think we've given periodic updates here and along the way before, but the facility is nearing its completion and is aimed to be ready on November 1st of this year. I'll be joined midstream here in my presentation by Mr. McCoy from the Metro Waste Authority. We will face some modest increased costs for hauling to that location, cash expense of an additional $30,000 a year in fuel to deliver there, and a modest increase from our current $80 per ton to an expected $85 per ton in terms of a processing fee. We are still working on how we handle revenue share. There are considerations on both sides for what that looks like, so it's still something that's a fluid situation that we'll be able to capture before we bring the contract to you all for approval.
Just a quick question. I mean, the recycling markets aren't such that they're anticipating revenue share, are they? I mean, has it bounced back some, or?
Some. It's not nearly as healthy as they were, say, seven or eight years ago when a ton of paper was $100 per ton, but it's not as bad as they were three years ago where a ton of paper was worth negative $5. So, there is some value to the content of recyclables, though that's challenged by the quality of the content that we put into our carts. That is and remains the key challenge for Des Moines, and that's why there is a difference between the $85 a ton for the recyclables in the blue carts in the Des Moines community versus what would be expected to be $78 a ton for the suburban members of CurbIt because we have a lot more contamination in our carts. Something that we've been working on for several years and finally resolved to what is the best practices promoted by the Recycling Partnership as a nationwide consortium of parties in the recycling business of actually doing curbside checks and leaving behind what are called oops tags that are both informative and instructive and corrective. We started that in 2018, and we've published some of the most interesting results of that on our social media if you've been following those, but stepped it up into full-scale production last year with iPads that are GPS-tagged so we can document in live in real-time and shove into the database the problem, when it was and what it was that was sorted, and then also step up successive actions based on what that inspector found. This year was our first full year with two solid waste interns working for most of the summer, popping lids on recycling carts and where they found problems, leaving behind instructional tags. Every single cart that gets inspected gets a tag. Ideally, we'd like to leave behind 100%. The flip side of it is the oops tag is the good side, inviting them to, letting them know their cart was inspected, that they passed, and that their load was taken away. But unfortunately, sometimes we have to leave the other side up with what was noted as the items that were rejection. By far, the most common contamination item in our carts is plastic bags. And interestingly, the Metro Waste Authority's machinery will be able to defeat those in a way that our private processor cannot. And pizza boxes is number two. Grease-contaminated pizza boxes is the number-two item in there. But that's by no means the only source of contamination, and were that the case, we would be in a very different situation in terms of tonnage, but we end up getting a lot of extra stuff put into the recycle bin that's clearly not recyclable, and it's oftentimes heavy stuff or items that are completely recyclable put in in ways that defeat the machinery at the recycling plant. I cannot tell a bagged item containing aluminum cans, which are very recyclable, very valuable, from a bag of trash because it's been bagged up.
You mentioned the pizza box thing. What do you do, I mean, what do we do as far as education goes? Because that right there, I had no idea that pizza boxes don't go in there. And so, if...
It's even more nuanced than that. You can tear off the top half of the pizza box, and that's not typically grease-contaminated.
So, what do we do for education? Do we participate? Because I know Metro Waste does a ton of education, but I don't think that we participate in any of that, right?
We do not, and that's part of what we're looking at as our next phase, still kind of in its infancy, trying to get this contract set up as an intermediate step towards a more full-fledged participation in the education assets that the Metro Waste Authority brings to the whole community in a way that we're not able to access now.
And then you mentioned the CurbIt program. We don't participate in that as of right now, but we could participate in that and use our drivers to be the haulers, correct?
Yes. That would be something that we need to sort out that will take more time than we have between now and November 1st, and an expectation that we will be able to come to an understanding for what the next level of recycling looks like. And that can help, though I would wager that the person putting car parts in the recycle bin knows that's not recyclable. That's not an education problem. That's an enforcement problem. Bread is not recyclable. Ironing boards are not recyclable. I mean, you can take them to Goodwill, but not in your blue cart. And a lot of what goes into our bins is not the wishful recycling that we can fix with education, so even if we were to step into a more complete partnership with Metro Waste Authority as a CurbIt community, we would still need to have the kind of enforcement side because we have a lot of just straight-up garbage being used in our recycling bins.
So, when we do the audits, I mean, a lot of the examples that you just showed, all you have to do is lift up the lid, and it's very clear, but what about the stuff that is below a layer of paper and boxes? Are we catching that in our audits, or are we just lifting the lid and we're getting the most obvious versus there's, I mean, plastic bags can be anywhere in there, and they can, you might not see, there could be a half dozen plastic bags in a container, but if you just lift the lid, you might not see any of them.
Yeah, absolutely correct. The curb audit inspection is just pop the lid and look because we don't want people reaching in and handling the solid waste. I would submit that the contamination that I am more concerned about because it weighs more is the kind of stuff that, I mean, it takes a lot of plastic bags to equal one shop back. And machinery can defeat plastic bags as a contamination source, but we still have to pay essentially double the price of disposal to take a shop back at the recycling plant. But no, they're not able to survey the entire contents of the cart. It's just what's on top.
Right.
So, we are getting a shockingly large amount of cart rejections just from looking one layer deep.
Right, which 100% makes sense to start from a focus perspective, but I guess my concern is because I don't think that's going to fully fix our contamination problem, right? Like, we get all the big stuff out, we still have that next layer of contamination. And I don't have a sense of how big a problem that piece is, and we obviously don't need to fix that today, but, I mean, that seems like something that we need to fix over the long term.
Yes, and there's both hardware and then educational software kind of approach to working that in two directions. I would dearly love to get the big, dumb, and heavy stuff tamed as a higher priority because we just pay more for bad recycling, intentionally bad recycling, as opposed to the wishful, kind of ignorantly contaminating the cart with something that's not recyclable in the final analysis. Yeah, that's, I think, our next level, and we're working on a solution to also help that too.
I don't know if we're going to educate anybody that's going to throw shop.
That's, I mean, that's obviously not recyclable. That's not education. That's going to just need enforcement.
Yeah, that's not.
I think the other thing is just, to your point, the education. Like, you know, like on pizza, a lot of people think it's okay because it's paper or whatever.
Right, cardboard.
The food part of it is, so I think it's just more...
Yeah, this is not, though, a problem that's isolated to one corner of town or particular neighborhoods. We see cart failures in each of the four wards. You see the pink boxes there are the first-time visits. The green triangles are the second-time visits. And we don't show on this map, but I have another one that shows what happens when we have a third visit that also fails, but it fails the inspection. And each time, they've been left an oops tag that marks what was rejected, and what was rejected was visible only on that top layer when they left the lid. But we've had a, with thousands of curbside inspections done for the last several months, had a total of 136 homes have their recycling privileges completely removed, and we have a documentary database that shows what the cause of each of their inspection failures was. And so, you can see the map here. It's, again, in all four corners of all four wards, and it's something that is...
What happens to those residents when you remove that benefit? They just throw everything in the brown one, and then we just move on from there? Are they charged a different rate, or no?
No, it's a unitary charge whether you recycle or not, so we're just suspending their recycling privileges without moving into citations. The code makes an allowance for tickets to be issued, but we're not going in that direction. We're just removing their ability to contaminate our system with what's oftentimes deliberately bad. After three strikes in one summer, it's...
Is that what it is?
With education that goes along with each one of those strikes, it would be, it's more often than not going to be someone that is just not interested in recycling correctly. And then we remove their privileges. That's 136 out of 68,000 customers, so it's a small percentage, but I think as we chip away at the bad recycling, the deliberately bad recycling, I think we'll be able to make good progress towards cleaning up the stream overall. Next up, I'll introduce Mr. McCoy with Metro Waste Authority.
Jonathan, I got one question. On the people that you take the cart away from, what's to stop them from going to the neighbor's bin and tossing stuff in there?
I mean, technically, nothing, but that requires at least treading on someone else's ability, potential ability to recycle, so...
That was worried me. I had a neighbor who's no longer there, used to do that to me, come across, bring their trash, and throw it in mine, and a lot of that stuff was wrong.
Once you set the cart out, I mean, most people stop paying attention to it. It's still there, but it's, you know, that's at least a higher hurdle than putting it in there, you know, deliberately bad recycling in the competence of their garage or their own backyard.
Why would load this up if it's okay with the council? The mayor may have Leslie addressed Councilman Mando Bon's question on the Metro, Michael McCoy, Metro Waste Authority, here in East Locust. May you just address the contamination, or how do you go further into the contamination piece?
Good morning. Good morning. Leslie Earl Back, Deputy Director at Metro Waste Authority. Good questions about contamination. Nationally speaking, you know, you're never going to get to that 0% contamination rate that we all look at, and so the thought that you address those large-ticket items that Jonathan was looking at makes complete sense. One of the things that we've been asked, the board was asked, as we were looking at, you know, should Metro Waste Authority build this facility? How are we going to do it different than the current processor? And a lot of that came down to education and technology and the partnerships with those who buy the material. And so, a lot of really good discussion about contamination and certainly something that Metro Waste Authority could assist with in the future. On the education side or the technology side, this facility was built with technology in mind once the material gets to the facility. However, we are looking at partnering with our haulers with an RFP that we have out on our hauling contract of how to incorporate technology on the hauling side as well. And so, there's a lot of really new innovation in terms of cameras that can take the pictures for you outside of the truck that catches those really large pieces of contamination that are visible from the cart, helps hold your drivers accountable as well, and then also pictures that can be taken once the cart is tipping because oftentimes, for safety reasons and others, that is really difficult to address. And then there's also cameras that can be taken from within the truck as well. And so, that's just a new pilot that we're beginning with our recycling hauler and collector, and so we would be happy to share that information with Des Moines as well, and you can consider that as another technology opportunity.
Where is that currently being used? Or are you guys on the sort of cutting edge of that type of technology from a...
There are some instances across the country in select markets. We just issued a new collection RFP, and it will take place July 1st, and so we would have some data available, you know, summer to early fall next year for that.
Police management does that, don't they, with their commercial haulers? They'll take pictures, all of those things.
Yes.
And they're all supposed to be taking pictures now, both on the garbage side as well as the recycling side. Police manager just recently, a couple of months ago, used us as a pilot and are putting those cameras in now, and some of it is the WOWU product through the RFP, which is active and live right now on the street. But they are now using it to include artificial intelligence with it. Thank you, Leslie.
And so, to add into that, just wanted to take a couple of minutes to share the facility and where it is today. We are on time for November 1st launch. We will be running material, we'll be running the equipment on the 18th of March. We'll be running material on the 25th, I'm sorry, of October, and running material on October 25th and then going live November 1st. We are in the same contract buying you all are in. November 1st is the date we need to take material. So, with that, this is the door that the trucks will come in and back into. That whole first section that you see is the tip floor. They said one thing to do is go big on the tip floor. We certainly did that. We'll be able to hold material regardless of what happens. If you have shutdown of equipment or any kind of large influx, that material will be able to come here. Also, what we've run into in the past with the hauler or with the processor is sometimes just a midday shutdown. Where do all the trucks that are loaded go to? We had a Plan B, and thankfully, I think Jonathan would agree, we've never had to go to that Plan B, which is the Grime Transfer Station, which is behind you that has two tunnels, but still an option. So, it's set up, as you can see, so that we can take the garbage and the residue straight across the street to the transfer station and then ship to the landfill, either one Perry or Mitchellville, Grimes, Reynolds one. Again, on the side to the right, you see enough room there for train access in the future. There will be a rail spur coming in, which the new fiber mills have built rail into their system. And so, what we're going to do is quickly go through a video here and then talk to you, and then take some questions and kind of talk to you through the process. In addition to what Leslie was talking about, there'll be cameras above each one of these doors as your trucks dump. We will be taking video 24/7 in that room, but every time a truck dumps, we will be taking video and still photos with eventual artificial intelligence to be added into the system where it'll be picking up the contamination and then giving us alerts. But for now, it's videos, and we'll be going through it. We'll have somebody with cameras watching for that so we can stop loads or re-educate drivers or put service fees on where it's coming from. All right? Just push and play? About 13 acres sits on. Here, you're coming into the tipping floor where the loaders will put into that hopper. It'll meter it up that conveyor belt, send it through that wall. We've built this so it can be a standalone room, secure room, so at night, there will be a select few haulers that can dump at night for cost basis. Coming through here, I think to Josh's point, it's important to mention up on the right, you'll see corkscrew-type, but they're called screens, but they look like a corkscrew up there or a drill bit up on the top right and then lower. Those are the second ones to ever be installed in the world for sorting. They are supposed to be tangle-proof, so your Christmas lights, your plastic bags, all that stuff won't get tangled. Large items like that, vacuum will be pushed to the side and then driven down into a garbage bin. It's been working great in, oops, I'm sorry, operator here, in Vegas is where the other one is, and then it was piloted for a few years. But we did bring in most of the, most high-tech equipment coming in here. There's optical sorters as well. What those do is it reads the material coming under it, tells the machine what it is, what kind of plastic it is, what kind of fiber it is. There's four of those throughout the facility. The stations up top, you see those little bins with the slits there. Those are for humans for sorting. They're throughout the plant. There'll be about 15 of them working at all times up here. In the back there, where you see kind of some window in the middle behind those guys working, is a room for our manager. This is our education space. Behind that white wall, you can go out there on an observation deck, and then inside there's the glass observation decks that the kids can watch the equipment from both sides, so they'll be able to see the entire process other than the tip floor. That's the lobby as they enter. There will be a chandelier there of sorts made of plastic bottles. This room is meant to be able to be split up in a few classrooms if you need to, and then an exhibit hall up there as well, permanent exhibit hall. All those stairs made out of recycled wood, concrete base for those stairs, recycling, We'd love to have you all out for a longer tour. We just wanted to respect your time tonight, today, and I'll get you through it very quickly. That's the first time that one has been shown, so we're on our way. It's exciting.
Could you address the question I had, just in terms of recycling markets and the cost and what things are looking like? I mean, I know...
Yeah, unfortunately, Josh, when you were on the board, the markets were like heck, right? And we were selling you on a MRF that was, which was losing big dollars on an annual basis. And the Metro said, "We still have to do it." We knew what the future was. You've got to be able to control that future if you're in the business we are, so launch it. Those recycling markets have turned just, what, two years ago? Mixed paper, two summers ago, two summers ago, mixed paper bales were going into the landfill from your processor here. And today, those are somewhere around $80 to $90 a bale, so there's no way that they'll be going into the landfill. Cardboard, two years ago, was $30 to $40 a ton. Today, it's $190 a ton. The most expensive commodity right now is not aluminum, but it is milk jugs. And the second most expensive, that's somewhere around $2,000 for clear milk jugs. Then aluminum just below that in the high 19s, 1800s, and then you go down from there of different plastics. The market has changed completely, as they do, and we'll probably all be sitting here in a few years talking about how it changed again, right? The cyclical piece of that. That's what was tough on the private companies, is that piece that was cyclical up and down, and we saw them continue to change their rates, you know, 37%, 67% mid-contract. So, the markets are favorable. We have people lining up at the door right now to buy our material. We have a few contracts in place that guarantee us the purchase of our mixed paper as well as our cardboard. Glass is still a difficult market, but up as well, above the negative, where it used to hover at negative 21. You're paying people to get rid of the glass. Today, you're at around plus 3, plus $4. So, you're still losing money in the entire processing piece of glass, but it's come up quite a bit. We are going to be trying a new process to get that to a plus 25 if it's successful on what we're doing out there, and that is not using the MRF is the key to that. And so, counterintuitive, but not using the facility will get our cost of our glass up to a plus 25.
Is that getting the glass in like a single stream?
It's to get it out, yeah. So, divert, right? Divert it, and we've had good success in the suburbs with glass diversion bins next to our cardboard bins. So, in every city, we've put OCC cardboard bins or two, which are filling almost on a daily basis. We are now hauling, we've bought two trucks, and we are picking those up six days a week at this point. So, we're looking to do more and more of those cardboard dumpsters and eight-yard roll-offs and eight-yard dumpsters. The more we can put in, the better. Your residents are hollering the same thing as everyone else's. We take a lot of phone calls from the City of Des Moines. The message is the same. There's not enough room for our cardboard. We're going to put it outside our carts. That just slows the whole automation process that puts it back in the manual, right? So, how can we give them other options? Small businesses have no option. How do we give them option? We do run a small-business cardboard program or a CurbIt program. So, lots of things to do to encourage the commodities and things that the residents want to do. So, they are diverting tons and tons, hundreds of tons of glass right now for us that is not getting to the facility. We need to do more of that.
Is that, and we're not involved in that right now?
You aren't, but that is the talks that Scott and Jonathan and I and Joe has been pushing at the board meetings of getting Des Moines involved in more of this, more of those glass diversions as well as cardboard. Joe has shown a great interest in those, and so we've been, staff has been pushing to see where they should go around the city, and then we'll work with Jonathan. That's that year buildup of this contract. Can we just get something in place by November 1st with the City of Des Moines to then get us to the next year-to-three-year contracts, right? But right now, we're scrambling because you got the same notice as we did. The processor is done November 1st. And so, we'll get something in place. I think both parties have agreed to make it work, and we'll make it work.
Just for our education, you say that there are, the markets have changed, and it sounds like they've improved somewhat over what they were in the recent past?
Yes.
Who's consuming this stuff? Is it around domestically or in the United States, or is it export?
So, overall, it's international, but the domestic market has increased twofold. Where China has come in and did the sword that you heard, basically a wall saying, "We're not buying any more of your recyclables," rightfully so. They were buying garbage from us, right? And we were taking advantage of it. And so... And so, they said, "Clean it up. Get it to 1% and we'll buy some of it." So they shut the markets down, flooded it for a while. China, the government says that, but the mills said, "No, no, we still need to produce, you know, everything we need to, toilet paper, paper towels, cardboard boxes." So their companies came here and started buying old mills that were shut down. They're revamping them and putting them up, which then spurred more competition where our local mills in Wisconsin and Ohio started building brand-new facilities. They're coming online and we will be selling all of ours, safe to say, is contracted domestically between Wisconsin and Minnesota at this part, maybe some in Arkansas, the same mill in Wisconsin, but a different, you know, different facility. So the domestic market has gone crazy here. And unless you're on one of the coast, there's no reason you shouldn't be selling domestic.
All right. Anybody have any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you all, and thanks for all your board members' help on this process.
Be part of those diversion programs.
So our next steps is to finalize that contractual arrangement, which will be admittedly for a limited duration. As Mr. McCoy said, we're trying to get to what next looks like and just needs a little more time to sort that out. So, once we get that motion settled, we'll be able to bring that to you all. I'm expecting at the second meeting in October. Since the first meeting is today, we're not ready yet. So aiming for that next meeting in October to approve it. Anybody have any questions about this before I move to the next subject? I'm also the next one.
Thanks, Mike.
I set that for you.
What you guys got going on over there? Got that fake petition up or what?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
I see that.
You know.
I lost my portrait.
It was right there.
Where'd the petition go?
Stand up, and there we go.
Nope.
Where the dividers at?
That get to your mind?
Transitions are always a little awkward when it's the same speaker, but on an entirely new subject. So now talking about stormwater ordinance updates. This is a continuation of the process that we brought to you... There we go. We're continuing and concluding really a process that started in 2016 and 17 and into 18 that I'm sure you all are well acquainted with. The Capitol Crossroads process of creating both a common, community-wide, metro-wide understanding of the importance of stormwater. Started with an education outreach and kind of building consensus stage in 2017 and 2018. And then, and I'm sure many of you attended, some of those sessions where almost anybody that was involved in land development and stormwater management and home construction and building development across the community gathered for a series of informational sessions that lasted for several months. And then, and came to the conclusion in 2018 that stormwater is very important and we need to do more education to build the consensus to drive towards raising our stormwater standards in, at the mayor's group in early 2018. And then something happened in the middle of 2018 that made that a lot more important and moved the conversation from education to ordinances. And in fact, the very last element of the education process was post-July, June 30th, 2018, culminated with the Green Infrastructure Conference. Pam Cooksey pointed out to me, obviously I didn't take this picture because I'm in the far-left side, sitting right next to her, and Councilmember Westergaard, that's the back of, that's your back there, right in the middle. So, something that you all have been participating in, literally participating in for a couple of years now. We moved from education to the crafting of an ordinance as something that is the desired next step across the community. So there was actually a creation of a model ordinance that was then also kind of roadshowed around the community by Mayor Andewag and Mayor Kierowski, myself and some others from Polk's Water Conservation District, did visits to the Home Builders Association, the Iowa Commercial Real Estate Association, kind of specific advocacy groups. I'm hoping you all remember this moment here, but it's okay if it wasn't. It was a couple of years ago. But this was deliberately courting community-wide, metro-wide consensus around the finished product, which was to create a model ordinance that incorporated the Iowa's Stormwater Management Manual as the stormwater standard for the community. Currently, we use the statewide specification SUDAS to govern most of our public improvement construction. And ironically, the Stormwater Management Manual was supposed to be in SUDAS but was bumped out right before it went final back in its early days. So really, we're just kind of correcting the effort by putting it back in, kind of back-dooring I-Swim into SUDAS by incorporating it as an ordinance. And the consensus product of all of these people in the room altogether for a couple of years was to come to a finished document that said, "Here's what we all agree by and large what our stormwater standards should be and can come to something that would be the same across all the communities that adopted it." So looking at, I'm sorry.
So I have a question. I mean, this operates as a minimum, right? Not necessarily the same, like for example, Clive goes beyond on a number of these things already. They're not going backwards with the adoption of this?
Correct. This is a floor that any community is welcome to move beyond. In fact, it's an optional floor. No community is obligated to do this. But the outcome of the, that the two, three-year-long consensus-building approach was this is something that we can all agree is, as a floor, something that we should aim for. So it does not include some things that I know are items of interest, but it does at least step us into kind of a next level and enhanced level of stormwater management that can then serve to launch into other things. But we have, several communities have already adopted it. And I'll add one more that I learned this weekend is in the process. City of Grimes is working on incorporating I-Swim into it. Notably, Ankeny voted against it in May, but every other time it's come before a council in the metro area, it's been adopted. I'm not sure what the prospects are for Grimes and West Des Moines, though I think if we were to take decisive steps in this direction with an ordinance update, that might inspire those fence sitters to also get off the fence.
Why, what is the drawback? Why would Ankeny vote no? What is the hotspot that, or the hot button to make them vote no on something like this?
I am not exactly sure what the rationale was. There is a very modest increase in land use to satisfy the stormwater requirements, but it is very modest and delivers enormous protective benefits to downstream residents. I'm not sure.
So what's Ankeny following?
Well, Ankeny doesn't care because all the water goes in Four Mile Creek and floods our residents, right?
They do have some stormwater standards that are similar to what we have now.
But they just will not go for the additional level?
Correct. It's not a total wild west up there.
We've had this argument now for, with some people north of us since the 90s. And I think that, I would have thought that they would have rethought it when they had, what, 1,500, 1,800 homes that were flooded out in the storm that you're talking about because of what happened further north in that watershed of Four Mile Creek that flooded out all those places. So I'm really astounded that they would have voted this down.
I mean, does it increase the cost for building? I mean, I don't understand their rationale. That's why, I mean, I...
To put more soil down?
Kind of was going back to...
It does require a very small amount of additional land. It's typically, most, typically the increased costs are on the design side because it does require adjusting how stormwater basins are designed. But the vast majority of the increased costs are what we would call soft costs. It does not require a huge amount of land to satisfy the detention requirements under this. Because we're already managing, to one degree, the 100-year storm event, it really can be managed with just a very modest amount of additional storage space.
So all of those big warehouses are being built up around Ankeny? They are not increasing the capacity to hold water?
I'm not personally familiar with what exactly their standards are, so I'll, I'll say they will continue under their current standards.
So they aren't willing to do more to control it, basically is what this is saying?
Yes.
So, I apologize. You are not current, you do not currently know what their standards are compared to what ours is?
I want to, I know they're similar to what they are, but I don't know exactly what they are. I would expect water quality volume and 100-year storage requirement, which is what we have now.
What I'd like to see Jonathan, when you get to your presentation, I, what are we asking for changes to be? What are those? That's what I'm not seeing here. We want a coherent stormwater update, but are there changes that you will be asking us to put into?
I'll explain that in the design standard section of the presentation.
Right. It's next.
Because that's gonna, that's gonna be the determining factor for me, and, you know, to compare it, I know Ankeny and different communities may not adopt it. Clive, there really is no single-family homes being built in Clive here. I mean, they're landlocked. There isn't any going on. San Juan, Windsor Heights, Urbandale, I mean, the way the natural has grown, the development that's going on is Ankeny, Grimes, Joaquin. So, for me, I just need to see one of those differences.
Sure. And we even have included in the final version of the presentation, an example that shows kind of the difference of applying the old standards to the new standards. So the, the first layer of the unified sizing criteria starts with recharge and to the greatest extent possible, we're encouraging green infrastructure on-site. We do this ourselves with our own street construction and site development to capture and retain as much as possible of that first inch of water. Though it does make clear in the standards that that is a target. It is desired and not achievable on all sites. We recognize the practical difficulty of capturing and completely storing in the ground the first inch of rainfall. So it's set as a target to the greatest extent possible, but that's, the standards recognize that that's not achievable, so there's kind of an escape path for sites where it's just not a good fit. The current standard, we stop here at the water quality volume, which will capture and release slowly over the period of 24 hours, up to the first inch and a quarter of rainfall. And that's our, that's our current standard. That catches about 90% of all rainfall, is then metered out slowly over a 24-hour period on any site. What we're finding, though, across the metro is that those last 10% of storms are very damaging to the downstream-receiving water bodies. This is where you see stream beds eroding and creeping into people's backyards and undermining garages or threatening homes. And our fix for that is some stream bank stabilization was added to the stormwater rebate as a kind of a tool to help address that, though the dollar figure oftentimes is not enough to fully fund the project. So we are, as part of the design standards, asking for channel protection volume, which would address 98% of the storms to capture 2.67 inches of rain and meter it out over a 24-hour period. That protects downstream natural water bodies by slowing down that water from the overwhelming majority of rainstorms. And it meters that water out more slowly. The next level of protection there is not really detention or retention, and it's oftentimes capable of being fixed in the stormwater system on-site, is a metering of a reduction in the release rate for those bigger storms. The 2% of storms, we're asking the sites to reduce their flow rate to what it would be under natural conditions. Like imagine Iowa in 1835, that's the kind of rate that we want water to leave the site. And that would be protective of the natural, naturally existing streams in our stormwater system, which is a couple hundred miles worth of natural waterway, and it's predominantly found in people's backyards and it's predominantly privately owned. So it's beyond the resources of the city of Des Moines to be able to step into those 200 miles of naturally occurring quickway. So this is a technique to help, to help not make that situation worse through redevelopment. And it reduces, so you can see, the really, the key part of this, the overbank flood protection, is that two, five, and 10-year storms have the release rate that they leave the site reduced to what it would be under naturally occurring conditions. Not pre-development, because pre-development oftentimes is a cornfield, particularly on the green, you know, the greenfield developments, they're called out in the outer reaches as suburbia keeps expanding. A cornfield is not a naturally occurring condition. And it sheds water almost as bad as a parking lot does, particularly six months out of the year when there's nothing growing on it, six or seven months. So the idea of the naturally, natural conditions steps back to depending on soil conditions, what would be occurring here under pre-development, pre-agriculture kind of conditions.
Jonathan, if I could just ask, I've just got the, in my mind, I've just got this picture. I know, I'm getting to Four Mile because I know you do. But I noticed that there'll be a wetlands area north of Des Moines between Ankeny and Des Moines, kind of the folk county conservation, I believe, is doing that. And then as you come down to Four Mile, you've got a lot of stream bank stabilization along Four Mile. And right there, if you start to return, then you put in that additional basin that's filtering the stormwater that comes in. It takes the bad stuff out. I don't know what you call it, but you know what it's called?
The pollutants, yes.
Something that, yeah, I think you had a different name for it at one time, but you're taking that out so it can go on downstream. Aren't those things, those are things that are being done to slow the flow, correct?
Both slowing the flow and also cleaning the water that leaves. So it's both quantity and quality. It will take an enormously large amount of small projects to lower the floodplain. And with an increasing intensity and frequency of storms, we're really just kind of trying to bend the curve back down with working in projects out in the watershed. An exciting one is in the hands of Polk County. Public Works at Polk County has a watershed protection grant that could reduce, have the effect of reducing the flood elevation at the hillside apartments and the business park at Hubble and Euclid, and get those properties out of the floodplain. Those are, though, some big basins. Two of them are going to work. A third one is not going to, they're trying to find another place to put another, a third big basin that gets the volume down in peak flood conditions, kind of actually move the floodplain back down to where it used to be. So a lot of work dedicated to the Four Mile watershed at almost, at public expense to try to at least undo, you know, mitigate the damage that climate change is doing to more frequent, more intense rainstorms, to try to reduce the light... more frequent, more intense rainstorms, to try to reduce the likelihood of flooding. And if we can actually get it to drop the floodplain back down, it would dramatically enhance the protection and experience, the stormwater experience of properties in the city of Des Moines for those that have been recently troubled.
It would be nice to know exactly what our neighbors to the north are doing in that four-mile watershed and what, since they're not.
Sure, I will.
Any of this, I would like to know exactly what they're doing and what their standards are compared to what we're requiring.
I'll find out and circulate to the council here this week.
That would be beneficial. I think we all need to know that.
Especially when we understand the cost for Polk County. Seems like it's all primarily coming from one community who seems probably doesn't want to participate.
Right.
And they do have some protective measures, and even our, the final layer of these design standards, extreme flood protection, is similar to what we have now. And that's why I say it's similar to our current standard here on this slide. And the city of Ankeny does have something like this. I just don't know exactly what it is to address.
It would be nice to know the difference. I mean, we're investing in this watershed ourselves. Polk County Conservation's investing in it. We should try to ask our neighbors for help. If they're not going to agree to this, what exactly are you going to agree to do? Because if they keep doing what they're doing, I don't know how much we can invest in to fix it if they're not going to help. Right? I mean, we can keep doing it.
It would be even more helpful if the city of Ankeny were to adopt these kinds of things.
I'd just like to know what they're doing. I mean, I'm sure they're doing something.
We would still be exposed to the risk of flooding and, due to climate change.
Yeah, I understand.
Which is why we're, you know, buying out homes that are in now the wrong place. But some, some commercial properties and residential structures just can't be, can't be moved readily or easily.
Well, I mean, we shouldn't, I mean, if it's a, yeah, I understand the 100-year, but if a large portion is coming just from their increased development, and our citizens and businesses are suffering because of their lack of desire to be a part of this community, then I think that's a bigger discussion.
So, Mayor.
Well, I just want to add, back to the discussion we've been having for over two decades now with those folks, studying the four-mile creek waterbed involving into a whole group of people getting together with Snyder and Associates to study the whole thing, to work with Polk County, and after a series of events, including 1993 and 2008 and 2010, when we had significant flooding numerous times, they all agreed to step up. And, but, it sounds to me, and I'm concerned, that they haven't. There are certain communities that want to move much more slowly than others. At least that's what they indicated as we were trying to have this discussion over, again, the last decade.
Yeah, no.
More importantly. And it's, you know, everybody wanted to move fast, and there were one or more that wanted to move, take baby steps. And I think that, back to what happened with that 10 inches of rainfall in that area and everything north of them, one would think they'd want to move forward much more quickly. And so I'm with these guys. Let's find out what they're doing. They need to do it. All that water comes down to us, and also, we need to have a little help from the areas north of them, still in the watershed, over towards Sheldon and Alamon and those areas that are going to come down into Ankeny, which are now mostly ag lands. And they're tiling the you-know-what out of that. And so those waters are running off much more quickly off of the, those farm grounds than they did 20 years ago. And so, I mean, all that has to be thrown into the mix here, because we've got to figure out how to deal with this water, and it can't be just us where we are. We've got to deal with it where it falls. And they've got to have that, hopefully, a controlled release going on in the whole watershed, which would help everybody.
It's concerning, the amount of growth that they're having there in the, in, you know, I think Connie had pointed out, the massive amounts of warehouses and big, I mean, big buildings and, I mean, taking up a ton of land out there. If they're not doing their part, I don't know how we, you know, double down and try to fix everything that we can possibly fix. I mean, it just.
Well, I mean, we should be implementing best practices.
I understand that. I get that. And I'm not saying that.
And then there should, we should think about how there can be a consequence for their lack of action.
So, the mayor had to leave?
Yep, he had to leave.
Okay. So Mayor Polk and council, we will get an answer from Ankeny. It's actually already been requested, but had not received. I was just double-checking, because we do need to absolutely know what our partners in the region are doing or not doing and why. But I also appreciate the comments that we still have, what, 80 square miles that we're responsible for within the city limits of Des Moines, and we do need to make sure that we are protecting our property owners from what we can do inside our own city limits. There's been great examples of partnering with more regional entities, all the way up into northwest Iowa, even in part of the state. But more regionally, Polk County Conservation has been a great partner in these efforts, and there's opportunities to use them as well as others in those conversations with the communities that are not participating. So it doesn't always have to be us that's communicating that message. We have a great plan with the county that needs Ankeny's involvement as well, so we can put those pressures there as well.
And I'll finish with that last layer of the design standards that I note is similar to our current standard, where we currently require them to manage the 100-year storm flow, so those biggest rainstorms, now not the biggest, biggest ones, like we saw in 2018. That was about a 750-year storm, depending on where you were in town. The, so we are currently requiring the containment of the 100-year storm on-site. What we're adjusting is the release rate. And that release rate is what is important to the health and integrity of the naturally occurring streams downstream from the site. But the volume of water is very similar, and we're just adjusting the release rate, again, referring back to that natural condition as what it would be under, let's say, a five-year storm, just kind of turn the 100-year event into a five-year storm. And importantly, making a safe way of escape for the site, so that in the largest storms beyond the 100-year, the 500-year is kind of our, where we picked as the design floor for that, making a safe way for water to get off the site without harming properties that are on that site itself. A lot of the homes that we ended up buying after the 2018 experience were alongside those overflow routes, and they ended up with large quantities of water in their basement, or in some cases, doing, you know, the stormwater doing structural damage, because there was no overland flow route for the water to safely exit the area that it had piled up in, and it just barreled right through people's homes and knocked down basement walls in some cases. So this would require demonstrating that there is a safe path for that water to get out, and keep the integrity of the homes on the site safe from the water that lands on that site.
Jonathan, this is Carl Boss. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, please go ahead.
So, does the standards for amount of topsoil enter the conversation for new developments?
Yes. I'll mention that in a later slide, but I'll shortcut to that the, one of the elements of the stormwater management plan for any site is that topsoil on that site must remain on that site. That's compliant with the state law. And we're asking the developer to furnish a plan for that site to show which pieces of topsoil will be disturbed, which will be protected, where it will be stockpiled, so that topsoil doesn't, doesn't found its, doesn't readily find its way offsite, so to speak. That's a takeaway.
Is there a?
Sorry, go ahead.
Is there a minimum standard, like, I've heard four inches of topsoil? Is that the minimum that needs to be supplied on, for example, residential development?
There is not a minimum depth of topsoil to be required across every square inch of the site. It simply requires that all the topsoil that is there now be accounted for and managed and redistributed in the most important places on the site. So what we'll, what we expect to see is topsoil stripped from underneath structures in impervious places where you don't actually want it, and then redistributed around the site. That will get you most, if not much, of your way to the, to a uniform thickness of four inches across the site, but not actually requiring four inches.
And just to clarify, that's being done now, because state law requires that topsoil cannot be removed from any building site.
Yes. That's, that is, what we're, what we're adding to the process is proof that the development is compliant with state law.
Yeah. You can't, you can't remove topsoil.
Right. And we, the collective we in the metro, through the Capitol Crossroads process, incorporated lessons learned from the city of Corvino, which has a very assertive kind of topsoil management program, where there is a bit of a learning curve for contractors and developers in the business. But it takes, it takes a plan and proof of the, in our case, we're asking for proof of the plan to make sure that topsoil is, in fact, remaining on-site and being distributed to where it will benefit the site enough.
Is that required now?
Yes.
The topsoil plan is not, the soil management plan is not required now. The state law, it has not changed since 2016 or so.
So that would be part of the change, where we'll have to require them to put together a plan to submit during their building permit process?
Thank you for clarifying that, Jonathan.
Yes.
Are there, there are communities that have that four-inch requirement now, correct?
I believe so.
Including in, I mean, it's, I think, Clive? Maybe not?
I'm not exactly sure.
I'm not aware of anybody.
I do know that it did not get to consensus support from the metro communities in the Capitol Crossroads process, so that's why I'm only advancing the, that kind of floor, the minimum that did have broad-based community support that is identical to the output produced by the extremely collaborative stakeholder engagement process that brought everybody with a dog in the fight into the room to come up with what should this look like. I'm certainly wanting to look at more steps beyond that, but would like to do that incrementally.
Yeah, certainly. I mean, this is obviously the first step.
Yeah. Sorry, let's get to over one. So it will apply to new development when adding 10,000 square feet of impervious surface, and then all the unified sizing criteria will apply, much like the square footage requirement or dollar figure building permits is on chapter 50 for flood protection. That was recently, relatively recently approved. The threshold is cumulative, so you can't do multiple 9,000-square-foot projects and evade the stormwater requirements but one time. So that second project would do so, would then trigger the application of the unified sizing criteria. So redevelopment that adds more than 10,000 square feet of impervious surface depends on how much, what fraction of the total site that is. If it's more than 50% of the site, then you're basically redoing the whole site at that point, 50 to 75 to 100%. But if the, if it's just a modest adjustment to the site, less than 50, we're not asking the redeveloper to apply all of these stormwater standards just using water quality volume and channel protection. Because this is redevelopment, it's, you know, got a whole host of complications to it. We recognize that and set a 50% site disturbance threshold to where you're more, the redevelopment project is adjusting the site rather than repurposing it wholesale. And again, that is cumulative. So new standard will not apply to existing developments at all. Someone that has already built and enjoying the use of their site can continue to do so in perpetuity. And there are a whole host of exceptions, like everything else in life. We came up with a series of scenarios where it just wouldn't make any sense, logging an agricultural activity going to be exempt, and anything that will do adjustments to single-family structures, so we're not going after individual homeowners with this ordinance, and anything that, where the city has said, you need to fix your stormwater system on your site, will not trigger the application of new design standards to whatever it is that goes in there. It's essentially going to be a repair. And included in that kind of repair methodology is that removal and replacement of a facility or a component of a facility that looks exactly what it is, that looks exactly like what it is now, will not trigger stormwater standards. So if someone is removing and replacing part of a parking lot, they may, they may do so without the concern about needing to design a whole new set of stormwater, a whole new set of stormwater facilities just because they want to fix their parking lot. And you could even make small incremental changes to your parking lots over time until you get to that 10,000-square-foot adjustment. So, you know, you could add a parking stall without triggering, without triggering stormwater standards. And anything added before 1977 will not count. That's the year, the date and year that the city started requiring site plans, so we have something to look back on versus the proposed, so we can, so we can actually count the square footage accurately.
So what was that about, 1977? I missed that.
Sites developed before September 6th of 1977 predated the city's site plan process. So we don't have site plans for sites developed before 1977. So there's no, there's no baseline to go back to to say what was changed and when.
Okay.
So they're just exempted.
If they're redeveloped now, like, I'm thinking of the property on Hubble, the old Gordmans, that is, was redeveloped, but I know they had to take out some concrete to put in ground, you know, grass because of the flooding.
There, yeah, there are different, a whole host of other reasons why someone, a developer might need to make adjustments to their impervious area.
Okay.
This is just looking at impervious area added before we started tracking site plans. It doesn't, it doesn't count. So if they're now adding new impervious area, then there is, you know, if they're adding 10,000 square feet of impervious area through redevelopment, it will depend on how much of the site.
Actually, they had to take out, they had to take out concrete and...
And I would wager that's driven by landscaping and green space requirements, which are not part of this.
But it was in the floodway. What, I mean, it, there was a parking lot, but now it's been deemed in the floodway, so they had to remove it. Okay.
So that's probably chapter 50 then, instead of this is, this is chapter 42 that we're proposing.
Okay.
Different reason. So the, I mentioned a site example. We had our engineering team in the clean water program under Patrick Bean's supervision do the modeling that would be required of any, of any new development. So, you know, they just picked a 10-foot, 10-acre area, adding a building and a parking lot and stormwater structures, and compared to the current standard, to the proposed standard, down to adjusting the release rates to what we would expect that they're required to, you can see a very small increase in the storage volume. And that's typically going to be measured up from the bottom rather than out, though I would wager, and this is entirely up to the discretion of the site engineer, developing what, you know, where you put that 130,000 cubic feet. It's a very modest increase in the volume of water to be retained on-site, but not necessarily resulting in more landmass. That's, that's going to reduce the developable area of the site. But this, this does reduce the amount of harm done to downstream properties by measuring out the release rates for those smaller storms short of the 100-year, and does so with a very modest increase in the storage volume required at what we set as our most extreme event that we're going to manage on-site, the 100-year storm. set as our most extreme event that we're going to manage on site, the 100-year storm. So I cannot say that it's no impact, but the impact is relatively modest. So the, more of those impacts, some of the changes are noted as the new elements there that are part of existing requirements. So we just did one example on the math there, but others in the Capitol Crossroads process did, you know, analyzed a range of sites and found that for a 100-acre development under varying soil conditions and topographies could result in an increase 0.4 to 1.5 acres. So again, a very modest amount of land, additional land under a variety of soil conditions to capture that modest increase in volume. One thing that is different is that we are adding to the list of as-built. That's our, kind of the assertion at the very final end of the construction process that what was required and designed and submitted and approved actually was built as required. So we require that now for public improvements and some other things. This is adding stormwater facilities to that. So a requirement the developers already have, we're just adding one more category of improvements to that list of as-built that need to be furnished. We do now require a maintenance plan. It has no timeline for compliance on it. So adding a timeline for compliance that problems with a privately-owned stormwater system must be fixed within 30 days or coordinated on a schedule with the city. So that we don't just have a problem sit there and the developer know about it and acknowledge it, or the property owner know about it and acknowledge it and say they'll fix it, you know, two years from now. That's possible under this scenario now. This would require kind of expeditious, more routine maintenance to be done within 30 days. And if there's a good reason to extend a timeline, I mean, we're not going to do a lot of earth moving in December, so that would be a good reason to defer something from, for past the 30-day requirement. It just requires consultation with city staff. We do presently require a stormwater management plan, and we're adding two new elements to that, the natural resource inventory and the soil management plan that I mentioned before. So again, just appending a few new requirements to the existing requirement to do a stormwater management plan. And we expect this to yield a whole host of benefits that we are, as sites develop and redevelop, we are, in smaller storms, reducing the flow rate as much as 90%. And we're taking a big chunk, anywhere from 10 to 40, out of those larger storms that are becoming more frequent and more intense. We'll be able to better monitor and verify compliance with the requirements that are actually kind of similar to what we have now, but we don't have any way of verifying that. And adding some tools for non-compliant stormwater systems. And eventually getting to where we have more sustainable development with more of the water managed on the site where it lands by encouraging the, as much as possible green infrastructure and that recharge volume, that first layer on the, on the design standards, and then walking through the requirements from there. So this, the Iowa Stormwater Management Manual is a much more descriptive document than a prescriptive one. It doesn't tell you how to satisfy the requirements. It releases to the design engineer a lot of flexibility and a lot of capability to design around the specifics of the site. And the requirements are really more aimed at what leaves the site. So that the degree to which a designer can manage their stormwater on-site through green infrastructure and recharge volume reduces their land and storage volume required to release that water back offsite. So that's why that first layer, although it says it's a target and not achievable on all sites, it's the essential first step, and it really goes a long way to minimizing the backend requirements. If you try to shove all your stormwater management into, you know, the corner, the corner of the lot, it will probably be larger and more expensive. But creatively understood and applied throughout the whole site, you can lower your costs, lower the footprint of stormwater management facilities, and have more of the site available to use for other purposes, typically which generate revenue for the developer. So our next steps is continuing stakeholder outreach. We're not ready to bring this for your approval at the first meeting in October, so I'm aiming for the first meeting in November. It's on its, has to be its last lap through other departments for verification, mostly that we're not working at cross purposes with one code in one section saying one thing and another code in another piece of the code manual saying something else. So trying to make sure that our i's are dotted and t's are crossed. And once that's prepared, I will be fully ready to share that with the entire stakeholder community. Though, the actual design standards are 100% unchanged from the consensus document that came out of the Capitol Crossroads process. That's, I think, an important step in this is to advance the exact same standards that the entire metro community came to, maybe except Ankeny, came to consensus around to say, this is what we want to do for stormwater standards across the metro. And then once that's, once that's ready, I'll be able to circulate that. There are impacts to development beyond just the standards proposed in the ordinance, so I want to make sure we have an opportunity to get stakeholder feedback on those things. But then our next steps are preparing council documents and bringing it to you for approval in November, aiming for a February implementation date, so there's time to adjust plans that are already in motion.
Thank you, Jonathan. That was very good. I really appreciate Patrick Bean. He always comes to my aid. He goes and meets me on-site with people, so thank you. It's hard to recognize people when we have masks and hats on sometimes. So I know the last time I was like, who are you? So thank you, Patrick. And, you know, engineering is just great to give us all kinds of information. So thanks to all three of you because it, I think I've learned a little bit, but I know about this much compared to what the professionals know. So thank, thank you very much. Do we have any more questions before we adjourn?
Okay.
Okay? Thank you very much. With that, we can call the meeting over.
Do you have some follow-up?
Yes.